All right, I think we're gonna go ahead and get started. Good evening, everyone. The time is now 7:30 PM, and I'd like to call to order the July 26, 2023 Downers Grove Public Library Board of Trustees Meeting to Order. If you could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the library of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the book with liberty and justice for all.
We acknowledge that the Downers Grove Public Library sits on the unsated, traditional, and ancestral homelands of Native peoples. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the Indigenous peoples who have been caretakers of the land throughout generations, past and present. We invite you to learn more about the genocide and forced displacement by non-Native settlers and the ongoing injustices against Native peoples. Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call?
Trustee Dory?
Here.
Trustee Humphreys?
Here.
Trustee Kuntia will not be in attendance tonight. Uh, trustee Neber?
Here.
Trustee Slaydak?
Here.
President Gagani?
Here.
Item number four is our Consent Agenda. We'll be starting with item A, June 28, 2023, regular meeting minutes.
President Gagani, this is the first time you've had the consent agenda?
Yes, yes. I'm learning a bit about it.
Yes, for the benefit of the audience, we're doing Consent Agenda. Everything on that agenda is approved in one, um, in one vote, unless a trustee requests that one of those items be moved off of the Consent Agenda for discussion. Um, this month, we have our Consent Agenda. It does include our financials for the first time. Um, but I do wanna draw the board's attention to the fact that we are actually missing our fund balance report and our revenue report this month. Neither was available from the Village of Downers Grove as of 15 minutes ago.
So we should remove that item?
Well, the financial report has presented.
It has presented, good.
And this is a typical mechanism of government. The village council does this regularly. This isn't anything to cause anybody any suspicion or alarm.
Right. It's just, um, as you, as everybody knows, who was at our last board meeting, we just approved, uh, updated bylaws. And the former bylaws actually had the order of the agenda and the agenda items listed in the bylaws. We took that out, and so now we have more control over the agenda itself for agenda building from month to month. So that when we have things that we want to move to the top of the agenda, have in a consent agenda, not have in a consent agenda, we actually have that, um, flexibility.
All right. So we've got several items that need to be approved. Do we have a motion or any comments?
I would move that we approve A through E. Their minutes, I have read them. And then we can take a look at the financials. Can we let us take a look at it more closely? So I would move A through B.
You want to remove F and G from the Consent Agenda? Then we would move the Consent Agenda as well.
Okay, I move F and G, we are moving the Consent Agenda.
For the director, what's the pros and cons of putting the financial report in the Consent Agenda versus having it be a separate line on? Because that, that's the only part of it that I'm slightly uncomfortable with.
Yeah, it's just expediency. Um, the, and the board, anybody can ask questions about the financial reports at any time, unless there is, uh, you know, something you want removed from invoices or you have specific questions about it.
In a week that we don't have a bunch of, um,
Yeah, but I agree.
executive sessions, not, or not keeping the financial reports in there, we make this pretty meaningless, right?
Right.
So are you removing the financial reports from the Consent Agenda for tonight?
Does anyone have a second to that? No.
Well, and, and actually, the way we have it listed on the agenda, any item on the Consent Agenda may be removed by any trustee for a separate consideration. So you can just say approve.
Doesn't require a vote?
Yeah, so just say approve A through E. And we'll get a second on that, and then we'll go to the next.
I think we need to look at ways to make sure that the financial stuff is kept separately or some way to do that, because it always raises concerns.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, second to approve items A through E on the Consent Agenda. Uh, can we go ahead and proceed? Proceed with a voice vote.
That's, yes, it's minutes.
We can still have discussion of any of those items if anybody wishes before the vote.
Correct.
So if there is no discussion, we can move ahead.
We'll go ahead and proceed with, uh, votes. All those in favor of approving items A through E on the Consent Agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, and all those abstaining. All right, so we've approved the regular minutes, executive minutes, um, four different executive sessions. Um, next up, we've got our financial reports and invoices.
You have questions? Marty?
Nothing specific, no.
Oh, in principle, you should.
Yeah, yeah, just since we're experimenting with the new agenda under the new bylaws, I just thought we might wanna start setting some ground rules.
Sure, and then we won't do a Consent Agenda next time.
What was the capital replacement fund expenditure of $25,000 in June? Page, uh, 22, it shows a $25,001.29, June 2023 expenditure.
I do not recall because, hang on, I have to, I have to go back to the invoices of note from last month to find that.
What, what page is that?
I believe that was more furniture. Was that furniture? Mm-hmm.
Oh, I see.
Oh, it was corp, it was half furniture, and that was the last of the furniture. It was Corporate Concepts, and the other half was Hallett Movers, who did the, um, final moves and the, uh, installation of fer, and helped with the installation and reinstallation of furniture.
And because it's an install, it's considered capital?
Yes, those are all, those are all part of the, um, workroom renovation project package.
Within budget?
Yes, and they were all within the budget for the renovation project.
Do you remember offhand how much the, the cleaning was with the prior company? I know they were like very much underbid, but.
It was approximately 30% lower than what we're paying.
No.
I do not recall dollar amount. I remember the 30%.
The cleaning company, Complete Cleaning, is that what we're looking?
Yeah.
Complete Cleaning is on the invoice listing at $11,040.
Yeah, no, I was just curious with the previous, because we have the switch.
The previous company was around $5,000, I believe.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and I believe that this month's, uh, includes carpet cleaning as well as the monthly. And you'll, so you'll see it fluctuate, um, the amount that we're paying the cleaning company when we do additional things like the current high dusting project and the carpet cleaning. And those are also budgeted in that cleaning line as well.
Could I ask a procedural question, please?
Sure.
I may be wrong, but I thought we discussed at an earlier time we were gonna change our process to make a motion first and then discuss. And so we should have a motion to approve the financial report before we discuss it. I saw.
Happy day.
Okay, financials and invoices, or just?
Financials and invoices.
Second. We have a motion and a second.
Then we can discuss it.
To approve the financial report, and July, it was presented.
Keep Mr. Roberts from rolling over in his car.
Right.
Exactly. And my good friend Robin over there. Giving me the, the sneaker.
That was a change in procedure from past practice. We didn't follow Robert's rules before, but we are now.
Yes.
Do we have any other questions or comments regarding the invoices or financial reports? So is there still like, it's, it's like a lag with the village, with Munis getting those reports?
Uh, it's the processing of our monthly credit card reconciliations that we send over, um, within the first week, week and a half of every month. We send the previous month's reporting over. And then, uh, that, I believe, has to get manually, you know, it gets reconciled with the bank, and it has to get manually entered into Munis to show up in the revenue reports.
Gotcha.
Um, so it's not showing up in the revenue, which then in turn also throws off the fund balance reports.
Does the village see this as an ongoing problem? Or do they see a solution?
I am working to figure that out.
Oh, you are.
Okay, you stop with your voice.
Good.
I will have an answer next month for you on that.
Oh, we've heard that before.
What's the invoice for Ansel Link that's a pretty high one?
Uh, that is the third-party investigation for the personnel matter. There were two invoices in there. It was.
Okay, and then the Cengage Land Learning?
Oh, uh, Cengage is.
That's print material.
Yes.
Large print.
The rest of these are pretty regular expenses?
Yes.
So that's collection stuff.
Yes.
Overdrive Incorporated?
That, that again is, uh, that's, um.
He talks to the I O L.
New resources.
Further question, Your Honor?
All right, if we have no further questions or comments, we can proceed with a roll call. Trustee Dory?
Yes.
Trustee Humphreys?
Yes.
Trustee Neber?
Hi.
Trustee Slaydak?
Yes.
President Gagani?
Yes.
All right, the financial report and invoices have been approved as presented. All right, so we are on to item number five, uh, which is public comment. All right, before I open the floor for public comments, I just wanna review a few things. Comments can be no longer than five minutes in length per person. Um, our public comment portion of the meeting is limited to 30 minutes, at which point a trustee made motion to extend that time. Uh, I ask that you kindly refrain from commenting or plotting during the duration of this public comment portion. Uh, we will let the agenda ahead, and would like to move through comments as efficiently as possible. Um, please direct your comments to the board members and refrain from personal attacks towards staff and the board members. Um, with that being said, I'll go ahead and open up the floor.
Can I just, wait, so is this another change where it's not public comment on agenda items versus non-agenda? It's just like all the comments?
Okay.
And it's also new business?
All the comments?
Yes, yeah.
I knew my own issue.
I'm Eve Breiner, uh, resident. Good evening. Um, I'm getting to be a regular here. Thank you very much. Uh, I once again want an update on personnel matter being litigated. Also, I wanna know what's going on with my request from last month on a land acquisition statement. I sadly have another issue. This time, it's about a book, Irreversible Damage, which the library is refusing to purchase. All you who extolled the right to read at last month, listen up. Here's a Google review of the book. Named Book of the Year by The Economist and one of the best books of 2021 by The Times and The Sun Times. Irreversible Damage has caused a storm. Abigail Shire, a Wall Street Journal writer, does something simple yet devastating. She rigorously lays out the facts. That's from Janice Turner, The Times of London. Unsuspecting parents are awakening to find their daughters enthralled to hip, trans YouTube stars and gender-affirming educators and therapists who push life-changing interventions on young girls, including medically unnecessary double mastectomies and puberty blockers that can cause permanent infertility. Abigail Shire, a writer for The Wall Street Journal, has dug deep into the trans epidemic, talking to the girls, their agonized parents, and the counselors, doctors who enable gender transitions, as well as to detransitioners, young women who bitterly regret what they've done to themselves. A generation, um, let me contrast this with the refusal to purchase from adult teen services. I'm writing to follow up on your recent request for the title Irreversible Damage by Abigail Shire. After carefully reviewing the book using the library collection development policy, we'll not be adding the title to our library's collection. The book fails to meet our selection guidelines in multiple ways, including lack of authenticity of information and authority of author. Throughout the book, the author presents misinformation and disinformation, often referencing social media posts and personal interviews and conversations. The assertions made by the author have been invalidated by major medical organizations, including the American Psychiatric Association, the American Academy of Pediatrics, and the Endocrine Society. Wow, sounds like two different books. This book's been refused to at least five patrons. Was the book, was a Book of the Year in 2021, and has 35 pages of reference notes. Abigail Shire has a Bachelor of Arts degree from Columbia, a Bachelor of Philosophy from the University of Oxford, and a law degree from Yale. Disinformation and misinformation are code words for information that doesn't follow the narrative that you want in the library. That is censorship. This is not settled science. 20 states have laws to protect minors from irreversible transgender procedures. Forbes reports in June 2023 that an increasing number of European nations are adopting a more cautious approach to gender-affirming care among minors. It appears the only diversity the library wants is diversity of appearance, not diversity of thought. I'd hate to see the library lose its state grant money due to book banning. I ask the library to purchase this book immediately. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Laura Hoist. I've been a Downers Grove resident since 1985. This board approved revised bylaws last month over our projections. It has rejected local control. Under the new bylaws, unfortunately, this board will now answer to the state of Illinois and the American Library Association, which is comprised of unelected bureaucrats, rather than to the will of the people in Downers Grove. The truth is, woke libraries like this one, who have adopted the vague deceptive guidance in the American Library Association's Bill of Rights that seeks to replace traditional American values with Marxist policies. The American Library Association is a Marxist-led organization that promotes woke, anti-American practices. The board cannot deny its discriminatory policies set in motion in this library by the vastly overpaid DEI Diversity Equity Inclusion Consultant RGW to create non-neutral, uh, a non-neutral library that favors historically marginalized people and LGBTQ over all others, especially Downers Grove residents who have white skin and who live on the North Side. This Downers Grove Public Library has been all-in on Governor Pritzker's promotion of anti-racism and the transgender movement. This library supports the Secretary of State's view that libraries must promote the sexualization of children. Our Secretary of State says it's up to parents to restrict their children's access to library resources. But how can parents do that when the sexual text images and obscene pornography are on display everywhere in this library? The Bill of Rights says a person's right to use a library should not be denied or abridged because of age. By adopting the Bill of Rights, does that give minors the right to freely access pornography? I think that's what they're saying. State Representative Anstavam Murray, House Bill 2789, that was signed into law last month, bans book bans. It is the first-ever law in this country to codify the active silencing of conservatives. It is dangerous, it is unconstitutional, it is a blatant attack on free speech based on the lie that parents want to ban books. No, parents want to protect their children from harm. Stavam Murray naively claims that extremists are banning books. That is simply not true. Parents are objecting to pornographic books and materials on display in the library. That's it. This law intentionally silences parents who object to library materials that are not appropriate for school-aged children. It is really about attacking families and extinguishing parental rights. The truth is, the left, specifically, this library has been actively banning conservative books. Case in point, its refusal to buy the book, Irreversible Damage by Abigail Shire, as was just mentioned. I checked the library website last month. There were 20, there's a waiting list for the audiobook, 25 people long. And I checked it again today, 24 on the waiting list. This library has zero. It has to be borrowed if anybody wants it. There are only two libraries in this area that have it. Downers Grove Public Library uses collection development policies to reject books it does not agree with. Curating policies allow left-leaning books, but do not tolerate conservative views. When you don't carry books you hate, you can never be accused of being book banners. This is deceitful trickery. Leftists aren't just banning books, they're banning words, too. They're socially constructing lists of words to force Americans to say them, such as pronouns or risk loss of employment. But parents need to know what Abigail Shire's Irreversible Damage book is saying about trans influencers on the internet and the active promotion of pride and gender-influencing agendas. Downers Grove Public Library does not want parents to know what's driving the transgender craze. Parents standing up and taking action to protect their children does not fit the politic, the left political agenda. But parents need to know why whole groups of female friends in high schools and even middle schools in Illinois across the country are coming out as transgender. Most have never experienced discomfort with their biological sex. Coming out as transgender is praised, promoted, and celebrated in social groups. Parents don't know, and they're not told, what their daughter, that their daughter or son is transitioning until it's too late. The term gender dysphoria has been expanded to include the whims and fancies of teens who just want to be popular. Parents need to know there are more than 12 social media sites helping children to discover a trans identity. And there are plenty of influencers out there making a lot of money doing it. Where is the dignity in this? I'm asking this board to reverse course. Do the right thing, especially for our children who we love and want to protect. It is not too late to reconsider your decision to reject, to reject, um, state control of this library and to prevent trampling on parents' rights in Downers Grove. Thank you.
Billy Hoist, preferred to mostly in areas, Co-Choice. I'm a teacher, coach, semi-counselor. Been in the district for 40 years. And I'm Laura Hoist's husband. And I have to say, I support her strongly. She has, uh, I believe in the, I believe in her. I believe in the Bible. And if you don't believe in the Bible, well, it's a good story. I realize we live in a democracy. Majority rules. If three out of five people vote one way, they win. I get it. Right is right, wrong is wrong. As you well know, case in point, in World War II, Japanese-American citizens were herded like cattle and put into internment camps. Just, they're American citizens. They were hustled out, put in camps. It was wrong. The Supreme Court ruled against the Japanese-Americans. It was wrong to do that. It was wrong. What did the Supreme Court do? They voted, or I should say, they ruled that it was the right thing to do. That was a wrong decision. It was wrong. Right is right. With all due respect, right is right. I get it. Ansel Washington in his movie says, "Do the right thing." It's crystal clear. Gender queer. Is this what we want our kids to be seeing on display? Is this what we want our children? We're not banning it, we're just saying, hey, don't show it to the kids. But this is out there. And I'm asking the board, saying, "Do the right thing." Do you wanna present this kind of stuff at storytime? Do you wanna talk about this at the dinner table? Do you really wanna talk about this at the dinner table? It's wrong. Right is right, wrong is wrong, and this is wrong. As a coach, I would never wanna talk or discuss this kind of stuff with my, with the high school kids. It's wrong.
Hi, Heather Camilli. I'm a resident of Downers Grove, but nothing prepared. But, um, I do have two kids that went to DGN. Actually, one just graduated. And my kids have always used this library, and they consider it an excellent library, a safe space. My husband picks up books when he regularly gets on the train. Um, so I just wanna thank everybody who puts a lot of effort into providing various, um, books for the whole family. Thank you.
You all know my opening bit. By now, my name is Robin Tarlov. I've lived in Downers Grove for more than 30 years, and I've served on the Downers Grove Public Library Foundation Board of Directors since 2017. By now, you're familiar with me and my unqualified support of this library, its board, staff, and policies. Tonight, I'm here to talk about book management. I think we all understand it's simply not possible for every library to collect and retain every book. That's why our library has a collection development policy outlining the process and criteria for selecting resources. I can only imagine the challenges posed by the limited shelf space and the vast number of new books that come out every week, compounded by the library's tight budget and increasing book prices. As we heard at a previous library board meeting, digital resources are a fast-growing answer, at least to the shelf space issue. At that meeting, we heard how staff uses electronic resources to meet a significant portion of the demand. I was amazed to learn all that goes into managing the reading demands of a community our size. And I'm deeply appreciative, appreciative as a number of books I have wanted to read were only available through online digital resources. So I just want to thank the library staff for working so hard to meet the wide variety of reading needs of our community of 50,000 people.
Good evening. My name is Paul Scott. I'm not a resident of Downers, but I'm a property owner here. I was a resident here. And I wanna speak to the board about the issue of empathy for wokeness. And I appreciate your willingness and commitment to, uh, serving the interest of the broadest spectrum of people who use this library. I also wanna thank you for standing against the numerous pillars of fascism that I've heard in these library board meetings, including ignorance, including misrepresentations, and including vulgarities. including vulgarities, and a whole host of other pillars that manage to promote fascism. Thank you very much.
Hi, Julie Redhauer. I've been a resident of Downers Grove for over 30 years. And in this week's email, I just noticed that there was a partnership with Hope's Front Door to collect school supplies for the upcoming school year. And I just wanted to say, just to give you kudos to partnership, with this partnership with Hope's Front Door. My husband volunteers for our local food pantry, and this time of year is extremely difficult for many families in our community. And I think helping kids to prepare for the upcoming school year and taking some of that burden off of the parents is just another service that you guys provide in partnership with Hope's Front Door. And I just wanted to commend you and say thank you.
Good evening, Ed Briner, longtime resident of Downers Grove. I'd just like to add a comment to what Mr. Hois shared with us about genderqueer. The library, Downers Grove Library, has five copies of this bill in our library, but Abigail Schreier, we have no need for that. The Downers Grove D99 unanimously has decided to keep this book in the library too, so I guess we don't care too much about kids. That said, I digress. I'd like to talk to you again about the safety aspects of what doesn't go on in the library. It continues to be a homeless encampment. Now, again, as we're not against gay children, we're not against homeless, but they don't belong in the library. When I get FOIA requests from you, we find out that the police are called here, on average, probably 10 to 12 times a week. And that's insane. We're just asking for an unsafe situation to develop. Part of what you sent me this past request, people throwing furniture around in the library, people swearing at the children, chasing them down the stairs. And from the last time, I'll just reiterate, there's a gentleman that was found drunk in the children's room, wandering up and down the aisles. Now, this should not be in the Downers Grove Public Library. It's been talked about before. We've had a nurse here before who's talked about, "The library's not set up to handle homeless people who are alcoholics, who are drug addicted, perhaps sex offenders, et cetera." You continue to just kind of brush this off, just as you do about some of the books that we do want and don't think are the most appropriate for children. It's like looking on Monday morning and you find out that there's 30 people shot in Chicago, five dead, and it's just Monday after Monday after Monday. So what I'm asking is, in the library, we continue to have unbelievable amounts of police presence here, and we're just asking for a big problem, and then everybody will go, "Oh gee, how did that happen?" So I wish we'd addressed that a little more seriously.
I don't talk of these very often, or ever. My name's Mike, I'm a resident of Downers Grove. I'd just like to remind the board, please check the FOIA results that are publicly posted for anybody who didn't look at. And it's reported that there are 10 to 12 police calls a week. I'm not seeing that in the FOIA results. And I'm mostly seeing teenagers making nuisance of things at the library. Maybe we should ban teenagers. I don't know. But, you know, yeah, I just want to point that out. Thanks.
My name is Nancy Solman, I'm a resident of Downers Grove, and I have four mother or three children, guys who come into this library. I want to say, I think you can do good, and you can be doing good things and be doing some things not so good. So I think to say you're not doing, I mean, I'm not here to criticize. What I'm always worried about as a grandma is that if those, if that is in this library and my little guys have access to that, is there, can't you meet somebody halfway and put books like that, that have material in it, in a different place and they need parental to take it out? I mean, it sounds like it's all or nothing with you guys. It's like, "We're going to have these books and they're going to be available to everyone." There's a lot of parents, and as a grandma, I don't know how I can explain that to my seven or my nine or my 10-year-old grandson. So can you meet people halfway, listen to both sides, and say, "Maybe some of these books that have that material on it should be in a parental space and need to be checked out with an adult"? Is there any way that can be done? Has anyone even thought of that, that maybe you could meet people halfway? It doesn't have to be your way, or our way, or your way. There's a way to find a happy medium here. And it doesn't seem like you want to do that. It's like you want it to be your way or the highway. And another little caveat about your diversity. Diversity isn't in the color of your skin or who you sleep with. Diversity is a diversity of thought. And it doesn't seem like, "I've gone to this board meeting, I've gone to the village board meeting, I've gone to the school districts' meetings." And I would say, on all those boards, we only have one thought. It's very rare I hear a conservative voice out of anybody on any board in this town. And that's what concerns all of us. All of us. And so I don't know how you all get elected or who appoints you, but that's something we need to take into consideration in this town. Every board you go to, there could be maybe one conservative on the board, maybe, if you're lucky. Everyone else has the same school of thought everywhere I go. And that should concern us all. And again, can you find a place in this library to put material like that where parental guidance is, you can only take it out with parental, okay, at a certain age? Meet people halfway here. Thank you.
I'm Janet Whinneyham, I've lived in Downers Grove for over 20 years. And I want to thank you for your work on behalf of the residents of Downers Grove and the suburban library community. You have responsibility to use your available resources to best serve all of the community. And one of the greatest things about the library is that the suburban library system has an interlibrary loan program and network and the ability to borrow titles from other libraries. The books mentioned here tonight are in other libraries, and they can be accessed by anybody who has an interest in the topic. They are not being denied anybody. And as a matter of fact, there are many books that are in other libraries that are not here. I've used this interlibrary loan mechanism for actually a number of Christian titles that would be considered Christian titles that are not carried here. On the other hand, there are shelves and shelves upon shelves of what would be considered Christian titles in the nonfiction collection. As for no conservative voices picked up this afternoon and this evening from the new bookshelf, America's Cultural Revolution: How the Radical Left Have Conquered Everything by Christopher Refill. I'm offended as hell with this book. I don't like it at all. I think it belongs in the garbage. However, there is a conservative book here, it can be on the shelf, you can use library resources to purchase it, and so be it. There are more conservative voices here than you would be led to believe by the remarks I also want to say that I commend you for your patience and courage in the many months of criticism that you've received. You all deserve a big support for that. And finally, I want to say that the library is a non-sectarian community forum for people of any faith or no faith. It's not a mission field, it should not be a bow field. We should not be, on the receiving end, sometimes belligerent, proselytizing by other members of the community. I don't always agree with what you do, but I am always the loyal opposition, and I think that that's probably a position most people take. If I don't agree, I have spoken up against some of the things, decisions you've made. It's my right, it's their right as well. But I applaud you for laying out the ground rules of civility, and again, I thank you for your continuing dedication to the people of Downers Grove and the library community.
I just wanted to respectfully ask the board to table item seven, subsection A, public comment rules. Specifically with respect to subsection number three, where it says, "Comments by members will be heard," comments by members of the public will be limited to three minutes, with a maximum of 30 minutes for a total public comment. The board president shall have the discretion to modify these time limits. Now, I would ask that you table this because I think there needs to be a fuller discussion on this. And to the gentleman's point here about fascism, this is an unelected board, and yet you are an unarmed government. And as such, in order to facilitate a conversation, facilitate a discussion with the public, the public needs to be heard, and needs to be heard in a full and dynamic way. Limited to three minutes is not that. And if you want to fight ignorance, if you want to fight fascism, you need to have those voices heard. Thank you.
Do we have any other comments? This ends the public comment portion of our meeting. Our next are trustee comments.
I have something to adjourn. I wanted to clarify something on the bylaws. We have not given up any kind of local control. The Illinois Public Local Library Act is still one of our governing statutes. It is still in the new bylaws as it always has been. Haven't given up any authority to the state. And the references to the ALA were in the old bylaws. So there's nothing new going on. All we did was streamline the bylaws, hopefully, to make these meetings more comprehensible, more efficient, give both us and the public more flexibility to get things done in a business-like manner. Nothing has changed in terms of the governance that wasn't already mandated by the state. There are certain statutes that we have to follow that have been in place for decades. So I did want to clarify that. The situation does not appear at this point to be much different than it has. The bylaws were being used for a lot of policy, procedure, administrative things. They were like, I think, 16 pages long. That's not the purpose of the bylaws. You know, we need to take a look at whether this board needs to develop some written policies and procedures to go alongside that. But as the kind of point person on the bylaws, I did want to clarify that. Thank you.
I'll make one quick comment regarding at least my own personal priority for this board meeting. And I think this is shared by some other board members, not that I'm trying to speak for anybody. But we have an important budget discussion tonight, we have a strategic plan. And to the extent that it may appear that other concerns that are brought to the board are not being addressed in a timely manner, I assure you that's not the case. I just think we have some pressing business matters to take care of this month, and then other things can be addressed in due course.
Marty, thank you for that comment, and Bill, appreciate yours as well. I hadn't talked about it, but I agree with you. I also just wanted to really quickly point out, as the gentleman mentioned here, I'm just looking at this month's agenda and the director's notes, looking at the PITS incidents, which is the library's security tracking system. It looks like, so during the month of June, let's see, seven incidents tracked by the library to the police. So that's, I think, less than, if I do my math correctly, less than 10 to 12 per week.
If you just suppose that you release your report, you'll find quite a different story.
So, and the other thing, I think it's interesting too, and the idea of the teens having a lot of impact on what the library is having to deal with in terms of security. That's not to say we shouldn't ban teens, absolutely, I think that's part of our special later, right, engaging them more. But I think that's one thing for us to keep in mind about, you know, who it is that's impacting our library, security and staff.
Yeah, I just had something quick, it was kind of in alignment with what Bill had said, but I prepared something, so I didn't ramble too much this time. I don't know. So I'm just going to read this real fast and then we'll move on. I just wanted to ask Julie, and thank you, Chris, for clarification with the PITS reports later on in her report. I'm pleased to share the high-level strategic plan that we're working on currently with everyone tonight. Hopefully, you had an opportunity to look at it and at the board packet that had been posted. We had a high level of participation with our surveys, focus groups, retreat, and I feel very confident that this document and subsequent documents that emerge from this process truly reflect what our community needs and wants from its library. We're looking forward to seeing a lot of these goals and objectives come to fruition in the coming years. That being said, there's obviously a lot of work to be done. We underwent a bylaws overhaul spearheaded by trustee Sladek, and we'll continue to push forward as trustees to ensure that we continue to update our policies and procedures while ensuring that our budget stays on track. I'm confident that the library staff in turn will continue to provide excellent service and programming to our community and keep our strategic focus at the core of everything they do. My hope is that the community continues to extend kindness and respect to our library staff, and know that the success of this library is very much contingent on that mutual respect. Taking a look at the library department reports, I just want to congratulate the staff on a really busy and successful summer thus far. Summer Reading Club continues to be a huge draw for all ages. There's been a lot of really great programming for all age groups. We had over 250 new library cards issued in June. Lots of employees and staff members attended the ALA conference and so much more. So thank you again to our staff and administration.
I do have one.
Okay.
Sorry, I forgot that the public comment does not appear at the end anymore. I simply wanted to acknowledge that our assistant library director had an article this month in the Public Library Journal, the National Public Library Journal. It is an honor simply to have an article in that journal. And the fact that she is a representative of our staff here in Downers Grove makes me feel very proud. Thank you.
Yay, Jan.
Any final trustee comments? All right, we're onto item seven, new business. Item A is public comment rules. And just as trustee Sladek mentioned earlier, a lot of these things were kind of clumped into our bylaws. So the long-term work that's being done is kind of slowly removing or placing items that had been removed from our bylaws into the policy manual where they belong.
I had an observation. Everyone who spoke here tonight came in under three minutes. I was watching, almost. I think one of the reasons for the change too was that there have been times when there have been a lot more people who have wanted to speak, and times, you know, when meetings have gone on until 11:00, 11:30 to try to give everybody that opportunity. So... So this set of rules gives us a framework, but it also gives the chair the authority to expand the, the overall amount of time that's allowed so that we're not just saying sorry, it's, it's been thirty minutes, you know, you all had your three minutes and nobody else gets to talk. So it's a, it's a balance. Cutting down on the amount of time, I don't think is going to have any really, really much in the way of cutting out substance of your remarks because we've all been very succinct. But at the time when we have many more people who want to speak, it will allow us to get more public comments in at the same time.
Thank you. I have a question. In the past, when we've had large turnouts at the board meetings, we voted to shorten the time, correct? To extend the length of time and shorten the duration for each speaker? Have we done that in the past?
No.
But we couldn't do that, correct?
It was in the, it was in the bylaws before. Now it's not in the, now it's not as bylaws.
That's not, that wasn't afforded before.
And the current policy, as I understand it, between bylaws and this policy statement would not prevent the chair from extending the time to an individual speaker as well.
Right.
I will say prior to, I don't know, July of last year, we only were, had one or two comments. So this is very much a result of, you know, changing and adapting to, to changing times. And since, I guess, since we've, every time, every meeting we've gone to the thirty minute mark, we have always extended the time to allow for everyone to speak.
So we can stick to the rules, Robert's rules here. I do move that we approve.
I don't think we're violating Robert's rules on new business. We can have open discussion if it's not.
We can have open discussion, but we're supposed to put the motion on the floor first and then have a discussion.
For new business? Okay, yeah. That's why none of the village operates. New business items can have discussion.
Would you like to make a motion?
I would like to make the motion that we approve the public comment rules as presented and discussion can now continue. And I believe that is what Robert's rules of order dictates. Now, whether the village follows that or not. We didn't use to, but I thought we agreed that we would do it.
Point of order, I think you're wrong.
Noted.
I'll look into that. Okay, so we do have a motion on the floor to approve the public comment rules as presented.
But it hasn't been submitted.
Awesome. Motion and a second to approve the public comments publication as presented.
I'm sensitive to the fact that this is, this risks the potential perception of trying to restrict public comments. And I wonder if there's things that we could do short of this to improve the situation without creating a hard limit. I've been to other public boards and commissions where there's a timer that is clear to the speaker so that they understand how close they are to the limit. That's an easy solution. I wonder whether we could make the three minutes a target time with a maximum of five minutes, also it's more suggestive. I know that when we have large turnouts, now that we have, it's not in the bylaws anymore, we have some additional latitude, we could, we could restrict the time to a shorter duration. But I think in, in some cases, maybe even many cases, three minutes is pretty fast when you're standing up there. I've been on the, on the speaker's side and three minutes goes by quick.
I think a timer that's visible is a good suggestion.
I like that idea. I, I also, I echo what you said. I think I would rather stick at five minutes than the general guideline I put out there when we do have a lot of people. And then if we know, like, oh my gosh, there's so many people, let's vote to move into three minutes. If we know that it's going to be tough to get through everyone, I'd rather default to five, um, just because perception, I think, is really important. We do want to hear what the public has to say. And most times it does go under three minutes and that's great. And we got through everyone tonight in half hour, um, and it's a fairly good size now. That's one thing. And I did spend a few minutes today looking, I found the Rails site, so Rails is reaching across Illinois library system. Because they have a whole library of, I think they have a whole library of all different policies that different libraries have contributed. And I spent some time looking at a few of them. I know, um, you know, Jen and Julie had shared some, some of the bylaws and some other, some agendas, but I also wanted to look at some of the public comment rules and there are a bunch of them out there. And, and some of them had no time limit, some of them had three, some of them had five, some of them had no, you know, kind of just free for all. And so I, I, you know, I don't think there's like a standard either. Because that's why I was thinking, oh gosh, it's three minutes, like, how, how does it operate? And it didn't seem to be, even for libraries of our size, you know, kind of bigger libraries that have a larger community that, you know, would in theory warrant kind of more public comment or more of a combination of both.
What if we split the difference? Has anyone done four?
Just to clarify, is the only change in this, the time change, everything else is the same as was in the previous?
Uh, it's allowing the president to do it without a full motion to increase the time limits, which was kind of just something to keep it moving a little faster. And then the big one is, I, we had started doing verbatim comments in our minutes and that has just become time prohibitive. So the number one on here that said that the minutes, that comments and written materials submitted by the public may not be reflected in the minutes. Video recordings of meetings provide access to the full content of public comments. Where we can, just like we do with the board's discussion, we can, this, Paul Scott talked about anti-fascism at the library. Period.
I noticed that a lot about the libraries and journalists, that they didn't have the full, like, almost transcript of what it is.
It's actually, it's actually very rare.
Just a summary of the public comments as opposed to an entire transcript becoming part of the board minutes.
Yes. And also the code of conduct, that, that visitors must adhere to our code of conduct. We had not been enforcing that previously.
Mr. Comment, I made that motion, but I want to emphasize that I am very strongly in favor of public comment of these meetings. Sometimes it's a little hard to listen to, sometimes I disagree, sometimes I agree, but I firmly believe that it is a public right to do this. I just wanted to be sure that I reiterated that, I've said that before. I personally have no problem with leaving the item at five minutes. If the consensus of the board is that that should be the case, I would, with permission, amend my motion to leave the rest of the motion intact, but remove that item.
And change it to five.
Change it to five from three.
Not change it to five, but leave it at five.
Amend the motion to five minutes?
I would amend, I would, uh, yeah, I would amend my own motion, which doesn't require a vote. If, if you have permission, sure. The person who makes a motion can always change it if nobody objects.
Wait, wait, I think you're wrong about that.
I will defend that.
Dave just saying, I amend my motion to.
This has been seconded, it's in discussion.
Yeah, we need to withdraw the motion when we can start over on it.
There you go.
If, uh, well, I don't want to withdraw the motion because there are other typed points in it that you want to, to discuss.
Just withdraw it and we'll start a new one.
Withdraw it, it's seconded.
Now, Robert's rules doesn't require, I can remove, I can withdraw the motion, but suggest withdrawing the motion and the seconded has to agree.
Who seconded it? Marty?
Marty.
We'll have to hire a parliamentarian.
I think I need to find a tour.
We have a lot of Robert's rules in the library and references.
Is there a Robert's rule for dummies?
Actually, there is. There's a cheat sheet.
I'm not sure we are, but I'm going to, at the risk of being chastised, I'm going to talk. I appreciate the clarification on the other things that changed. I think there's, there are, those other things are somewhat significant. I, personally, on the, the verbatim comments, I would love those for not, for those not to be in the board packet because it's, it makes it very difficult to navigate. However, I know from previous correspondents that we're testing some technology around
transcription services.
Transcription services. And I, I do appreciate having written, a written version of the comments to reference. They could easily be put in appendix or available in a separate document. It is very tedious to go through the recordings to try to find and refer back to statements that were made, facts that were presented, et cetera, et cetera. So I, as long as we're taking advantage of that technology, I'd love to amend that to say, fully agree that they should not be in the minutes. I'd love for them to be included as a supplemental material in the packet, just for my own selfish reasons. I also think the, I wonder whether in number five, it says that all behavior must follow the library's code of conduct. I wonder if that's sufficient. The thing that I, that made me take pause on that is who's going to be the evaluator of what's considered a personal attack? I mean, if we're up here, we volunteered for this position and we're appointed, if somebody wants to come up and make critical comments of me, I, I'm, that's what I signed up for. I think it could be easy to miss, for somebody could, to infer that there's a personal attack and try to restrict those comments. So that one, that one struck a chord and I wonder whether it's sufficient to just say you have to follow the library code of conduct, which I think encompasses the rest of that. So anyway, to sum up, I think, and then the last point, back to number three, I like the idea of encouraging the public to try to hit three minutes. I would love for this to say, um, three to five minutes with a limit of five minutes. All I have to say about that.
Okay, so just to summarize your points, you wanted for number one, to see a transcript of the minutes in an appendix form versus how they are presented right now. You know, three to five minutes with a preference towards three. And five simplified to just visitors to meetings must adhere to all behavioral, behavior guidelines and library's code of conduct.
And maybe the final, the final point, we've talked about this before in principle, that especially when it comes to something that engages our constituents, that the first, it should be presented to the meeting, we should table it to the following meeting before we vote on it. I wonder whether this is an appropriate time to apply that standard for this since this is just introduced. So I guess to bring this back to business, I'll, I'll move to, do I amend first and table later or table first and amend?
Just table it.
We can just, just table it and then it would give us time to
Yeah.
Work on the wording a little bit because I think there are some things we could do with the wording on the, the targeted three minutes, no more than five, you know, something, something like that.
You're the queen of wording too, so. I will move to table this to the August board meeting.
I just had, I just had one point of clarification that Bill, because I think your comment, I appreciate the suggestion that, yeah, we take the transcriptions of verbatim conditions out of the agenda because it takes a lot of time. Your suggestion of the, using the, you know, automatic transcriptions, right, I think my concern, would that be good enough? Because I think there's also a part of this which is like, you know, staff time. Because, I mean, if you've ever seen those transcriptions that get spit out of Zoom or whatever, they're, they're okay, but not always.
It still took Caitlin a full day to go through what the transcription service sent back.
I can imagine. I look at my voicemails.
And so we are trying, we will be trying a different transcription service this month?
So to, to respond to that, I am perfectly okay with a lower standard.
Whatever, it's kind of spitting. That's what I would want to be, I'd want to make, I, I agree, like, it'd be nice to have something because I also would rather do that than watch them through video. But if it means a ton more staff time, that like.
Yeah, I agree with you. I'm okay with a lower standard and the other, the videos sometimes and the audio is hard to, hard to handle.
There's a comment you don't want taken out of context. Bell, bell line purpose for lower standards.
Yeah, on that point, I, I agree with you on that. I, I think having them available can be useful, but I think we should preface it by saying that these are unedited, you know, transcribed, may contain errors. And if something in there comes up on a subsequent agenda, uh, then maybe they can be edited at that point or something if that's necessary. But that would provide some level of documentation, but they would not be part of the minutes that we were voted to accept. And the only other point I would like in here somewhere maybe is that the, the, the public comment, public comment should be addressed to the board, not to the staff and not to audience. I think that's the traditional statement in most public bodies.
I saw that in one of the public comment, those staffs looking, I like that.
So I kind of like.
Technically, you can't be talking right now because I have a motion on the floor.
Was there a second to that motion?
There wasn't.
There wasn't, well, seconded. It was to table this so we could work.
Oh, there was a second, Dave seconded.
Oh, they seconded it?
I didn't know that was seconded.
I withdraw.
And so discussion can continue.
I withdraw.
All right, your motion and the second to table this item until the next month. Did I get it? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, all those abstaining. Nice. Table this until August, there's a lot of. My goodness. Okay, item number B, item letter V, update to capital needs assessment, twenty seventeen to twenty seven.
Okay, the most significant thing that is being updated on this is to take the carpet replacement project, which we had put to straddle the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget years, half and half, has been moved into twenty twenty-five. As you all know from the strategic retreat and our high level strategic plan, that there were some things with some pretty significant capital, possible capital projects. And I really felt like we should go through the, um, the development phase of what those projects will look like before we start replacing carpet. Because if we're going to enclose the teen area, that has a significant impact on carpeting. If we're doing something tween baby areas, all the, all the rest, a maker space, um, those would have significant impact. And we're doing okay with our carpet cleaning right now. So just to move that, that particular project and beyond that, I, it, we will continue, as discussed in twenty twenty-two, the escalation of five percent per year in the transfer being made into the library capital replacement fund. So those are the changes as presented.
So your end balance will be significantly lower than it did in these years?
Uh, at the end of twenty twenty-three, yes. And then, um, as you can see, the, I, we won't be spending as much in twenty twenty-four. There is a window and curtain wall project that will need to be done and then the VAVs. But beyond that, the, the only high-ticket item remaining on this, um, this capital needs assessment is the carpet.
Can you clarify what we are approving here? Is it just the shift of the flooring out to twenty-four?
Yes.
The transfer into the library. The transfer into the library capital fund of 5% in the dollar amount, that's part of the budget discussion and subordinate to that budget discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
And what happens, um, according to the Illinois library laws, we have our, um, special reserve fund, which is the statute name for our library capital replacement fund. You have to have what they call a spending plan for that. You can't just be accumulating money with no idea of how you're going to spend it. So this, um, plan acts as our spending plan for the future.
When does the process start to start the next, you know, capital needs assessment?
2026.
About a year before it actually is.
Just be sworn out. End, end of 2026 so that by 2027, we have the new plan in place to move forward.
I hope that we approve the capital needs assessment report as presented.
Okay.
I have a motion and a second to approve the update to the capital needs assessment. All those in.
Yes, because the, when you actually spend the money that you.
Got it. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, any exceptions? All right. All right, letter C, transfer of funds to library capital replacement fund.
And this is our annual transfer of funds into the capital replacement fund to do all of these wonderful projects. This year, we are budgeted to move $367,500. That is an increase of 5% over what we typically had been budgeting. And that will be escalating each year moving forward as we discussed in 2022, unless you change your minds. And this allows us, we, at the end of, um, 2022, there was over 2.4, 1.2 million dollars in the library fund, our operating balance. We do have a finance policy that calls out operating reserves that are basically an emergency fund, um, that is an amount approximately 478,000. That's based on replacing boilers and roofs and whatnot. We do not actually maintain operating funds reserves because the, we have an intergovernmental agreement with the village of Downers Grove to cover any operating, um, expenses that are due to the delays in the tax, um, the tax collection process.
Do you want to ask questions or do you want to ask questions?
I don't care.
The 367, that represents, uh, you said a 5% increase over typical, but 2022 is an outlier, right?
Yes.
So on what basis was that? I guess I could do the math.
We had done $350,000 flat over the course of the plan because that originally got us to the, um, million dollars at the end of 2027. That was the target that the board originally set for themselves, um, back in 2017 when we approved this, 2016 when we approved this, anyway, the first time it was approved.
And why do you want to share that?
Yes, and in 2022, the discussion was around the, um, inflation. And that inflation was outpacing the inflation factor in the plan. So we wanted to increase that dollar amount. So that's where that discussion came from.
I just commented that I was the only one on the board who, at that time was still here. You've explained this very, very, very well. A great deal of, of thought and analysis over several months of effort went into this development of this plan. And I think it is serving us very well since. And it is, it, if it, in the, if it really succeeds, it will allow us to maintain our facilities without the need to, well, in condominium terms, have a special assessment. And I think this has served us well and I'd like to see us continue. The 5% rule, I think, is, was very carefully chosen and is working.
Any additional comments or perhaps a motion?
I'm just afraid of anything because I'm going to get called out by someone.
Bring the book. Just one, one other clarifying question. So this ends us at a million 154. So just to point it out, get a record that's 154 over the target, 154,000 over the target. Do I understand that correctly? Ending balance at the end of '27, the target, I believe in the comment, in the write-up was set at 1 million?
Yes, yes.
So we're, we're over that by that 154?
Right.
Okay.
There have been years when we were slightly under and over time they balance out.
We had some early cost savings with lighting projects that Ian did in-house. And then also we took a major advantage of ComEd's energy efficiency programs, rebates and grants that really helped us bring those lighting projects when we, um, updated all of the lighting to LED that really, yes.
And then for the, for the public reminder and knowledge, we transferred an additional 270 last year?
Yes.
To cover the cost of the water renovations?
Yes.
That was above and beyond that 5% increase?
Yes.
Okay. Make it all official. I'll move to approve the capital needs, uh, transfer, I'm sorry, I didn't remember that. I'll move to approve the transfer of funds into the, from the library fund into the library capital replacement fund in the amount of $267,500 in 2023.
Three, it was 367.
Sorry, wait a second. $367,500.
We have a motion and a second. We go ahead and receive a roll call.
Just a little discussion. I, I think it's prudent to maintain the 5% this year. I'm not so sure that it's the right decision for every year going forward, knowing that it lands us 154,000 north of the target. But I think this year, so that we can be ready to maybe execute against some of the strategic plan initiatives, I think that makes sense. I just want to say that I don't know that we need to keep doing it at that pace for the rest of the horizon.
Any other final comments? All right, trustee Doherty?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Nieberg?
Hi.
Trustee Sledek?
Yes.
President Kagami?
Yes.
All right, item eight, unfinished business, uh, the 2024 draft budget. Do I need to move now?
Yes, yes, you can slide over to the other side. We just started here. So, um, this month, we are presenting two different, uh, budgets. The expenditures are the same in both. What we are looking at is a change whether, we are looking at a 5% levy increase or an attempt to keep the tax rate flat from 2023 to 2024. Now, the other thing that's changed in this, in these budgets, uh, is that we actually adjusted our EAV increase estimate. In the June budget, uh, that was presented, we used a 2%, a very conservative increase. Since that time, we've talked to, uh, Downers Grove Township and Village of Downers Grove that are looking at a preliminary estimate of about 4% as the, um, the EAV increase. We went a little more conservative here, um, and went with our five-year average, which is 3.6%. So, um, that impacts how much, the, these, remember, these are always estimates of estimates because, uh, the village, um, will, this board levies a dollar amount. It goes into the village's budget. The village passes their levy ordinance, goes to the county, the county does their magic, which includes a whole bunch of like equalization factors, a bunch of other things. So even in the end, what's finally, um, uh, extended, that's the, the taxes that, that they put out to everybody who lives in the village of Downers Grove, is always a little bit different than what we actually levy. And so we're all, we're estimating not only the value of the property in the district, we're also estimating how much of a tax rate that that will produce. We do it in a simple format here. It's a much more complicated process at the county level. All that being said, so, um, also, we have adjusted all of the expenses. And when I get to the expenditures lines, I'll, I'll show you a little bit. We have managed to reduce, um, our estimated expenses because we're starting to get some more, um, we're starting to get a little closer on what some of those expenses will be. One of the most significant things that happened is LIRA, the Libraries of Illinois Risk Agency, our liability insurance carrier, had their meeting in early July that includes their, um, their recommendation for what to budget for, for the next year. And we had budgeted in the preliminary, in the June expenditures, we'd said 20%, they said 15, so that came down. And we're getting closer and closer on what we're estimating for personnel. So the, today's expenditures are actually a 5.1% increase. So that's a little bit lower than what we had, uh, estimated in June. So here we are in the fund balance. As you can see, estimated that we started, um, that we will end this fiscal year with approximately a million dollars and start 2024 with that million dollars. We have our revenues and our expenses here. There is that 5% increase in the transfer to the library capital replacement fund that is, um, contemplated in this budget. And this would give us an ending balance that's right around, um, the operating reserves number. Notice that the net change anticipated here is slightly over five, slightly over $500,000. Now, if you look back at previous years, this, in 2023, we actually approved a budget that was going to use about $600,000 of fund balance. Our estimate right now is that we will use only about $240,000. And as you can see, that is a trend that we have been doing in the past. The 2022 budget as originally passed contemplated using over 400,000 in fund balance. In the end, we used 159,000 of fund balance. Part of this is a function of doing our budgeting process. So early, we begin budgeting 18 months in advance. So that really does, um, we're doing, again, estimates, 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 some of our biggest costs, we don't even have a ballpark yet. And so we're always putting in, um, a higher amount to ensure that we'll be able to, to take care of those. The example I usually use is the, um, benefits for library employees, our health insurance program. That renewal does not happen till October. Our budget has to be done and sent to the village by August 31st. So this has, so you can see, we also have our library capital replacement fund. Estimates here, and that includes, um, that is next year's projects, again, with the, the carpet project taken out, um, and contemplates that higher amount being moved over. That would put us at over seven, over three quarters of a million balance in that fund by the end of next year. The revenues, the revenue estimates have not changed, only the property tax portion. So we are still estimating all of those other, um, smaller pieces. Remember, we do actually get about 95% of our, our money is property taxes. And the next biggest is the personal property replacement tax that is all smoke mirrors and moving. Here is the simplified, I should have started up here. Trying not to make anyone sick, okay. So this is the expenditures, the short version. We have updated salaries and personnel lines. Here, as you can see, part-time employee wages, that's where the minimum wage increases and the changes in our salary schedule really show up. And then we've had some pretty major changes to what our staff are actually electing in health insurance. So you can see that that health insurance line is actually coming down this year. As we've had people, people leaving who are taking a higher level of benefits, people coming in at the lower level, that, that's where that is going. And then down, we have the non, the, on the non-personnel lines, the biggest change is dollar amount are electronic resources and cleaning. As you can see, the cleaning services, it's almost $30,000 difference. And then down in the electronic services line, as we had that presentation last month from Van McGary and our, um, and our ATS staff helped put that together. That's a $48,000 one-time bump that we think will get us into that new ballpark with being able to offer the same level of service for electronic materials, or at least similar as we do with physical materials and be able, despite the fact that the, um, purchase model for e-resources is not favorable to libraries. The next largest dollar amount is the capital equipment under, uh, under $20,000. And that 12,000 is to buy a new section of pickup lockers for our bank of lockers that are here. We are regularly filling those pickup lockers, people love them. So we wanted to expand our capacity, um, by one more set. And other than those, the, um, the highest percentages come in our investment in staff, which is dues and memberships, conferences and seminars, anticipated increases in postage and software costs. So overall, non-personnel lines are at 5%, bringing us to a total expenditures increase of 5.1%. So let's go to the differences in the levy. This is at the 5% levy change. Because we're at, the EAV and the tax, and the tax rate have an inverse proportion on, on the impact on the provincial taxpayer. So when, uh, So when we're doing a 3.6% EAV, it reduces the amount of impact to 1.9% to the tax rate. So for the individual taxpayer, if you have a median home value home... So median home value in Downers right now is $374,500. At the 5% levy increase, that would make a total of about a $3 difference from 2023 to 2024. For the ease of calculation for your own home value, that is about 86 cents per $100,000 of fair market value. So if you have a home that is $500,000, it's about... It's about $5. And historic...
Less than the Starbucks.
Yes. That's at the 5% levy level. And one thing I wanted to draw your attention to was here. Year over year, per $100,000 of home value, we are currently well below what we were collecting in 2019 or 2020. Our tax rate has continued to drop. So we are... We're doing great, is the way I look at it. We're an LJ five-star library while spending less on our collections than most libraries in our category with a collection turnover rate of 5.2, which I'm sure Janet is there somewhere in the background, our consultants from RTL. That means, on average, every book in our collection circulates 5.2 times a year. That means we're really efficient in our collection development. And RTL let us know that that was one of the highest collection turnover rates they've ever seen. So help us. But those are the things that help us keep these costs down. So that is the 5% budget. Then we'll go and have a look. Hi, Rob and Janet. They're in the background somewhere. So this is the flat. So we're attempting to keep the tax rate at the current level. So no change, steady on. That means that if your home value didn't change this way, what you pay to the library shouldn't change either. It's all dependent on where that EAV number goes. So we're guessing. The biggest difference here is that it brings this ending balance well below our operating reserve that is called out in our finance policy.
Or he's... $478,000.
Yeah, so this would be... So this is about $80,000-ish under. But again, when you look back at what we've actually spent versus what we budgeted to spend, we usually come in pretty far under our budget. We're hoping that can continue to be the case. It's always a game. So the expenditures part is all the same. When we go to historic, you can see we are trying to keep it and that what we are... What our tax rate is this year, which is .2002. That is expressed in mils, that's per $100,000 of property value. So when you actually do the calculations, you add two zeros after the decimal. Okay, nerdy tax extension fun fact. And this keeps that amount per $100,000 of home value the same. And again, still pretty significantly under five years ago. And on the standard side... So one of the things Illinois... The Illinois Library Standards tell us that we should be looking at the statewide average from the Illinois and Public Library Annual Reports to compare ourselves and see how we're doing against what other libraries are doing. And so we're looking at the statewide average of 51%. We spend a little more on salaries, we spend a little more on benefits, a little more on salaries and benefits combined. But we spend significantly less on the all-other expenditures. And let me give you a little piece that's, again, kind of interesting library fact. As a municipal library, our library does not pay an electric bill. We are part of the franchise agreement of the Village of Downers Grove. Library districts, and there are a lot of them in Illinois, pay for their electricity. Those are independent taxing bodies that have directly elected boards. But they do not enjoy the benefit of being under that village franchise agreement or city franchise agreement for utilities. And so when you see this number that, you know, that they... 25% in all other, that is a pretty significant portion for those library districts that our... That a municipal library doesn't have to pay. So the IPR data is really great, but there are some things that are apples-to-apples comparisons among the types of libraries in Illinois. So as you can see, most of our pie is salaries and benefits. And on the revenue side, we get very little beyond property taxes, personal property replacement tax and the grants. That is the Illinois Public Library Per-Capture Grant that comes in at about 1%. That is the main state grant that we receive every year. Any questions on budget stuff?
Question about the reserve, the force of the total. Is that state mandated? Is that statute?
Nope, that is in our finance policy. And we are within the next 12 months, we are working through updates to our policy manual. And so that is... That's on the docket. Technically, the bylaws are the first section of our policy manual. So we're one. We have six sections.
So just clarification, procedurally, we're not voting on this tonight.
No.
This is for you to take additional...
Yep, this is what you want to see in August to actually vote on. And I will tell you that we've had some... Since I created this, there have been some changes on the expenditure side. So we'll continue to tighten those up, particularly on the personnel side. We've gotten some... Some advance notice of some personnel changes.
So I think like my opinion of, you know, flat tax rate, I think, is definitely more appealing. My only concern is ending up lower than the operating reserve and where that puts us in terms of the strategic plan, you know, where we want to go with that. Obviously, you have some big goals to that. So, you know, it's concerning to leave... I don't know, that one's short.
I was just going to comment that the thing that makes the flat possible is the assumption that we're going to come in under budget on a number of areas. And historically, that has been the case to greater and lesser extent during the years. I guess my question or my concern is the pandemic had a big dent on that. And the pandemic is... I'm not going to say it's over because lightning will strike me. But it's your opinion that the future will probably be like the past in that area.
We go with our averages.
Bar any.
Our historic averages tell us that it's wrong.
So you're reasonably comfortable with that?
Yes.
And I am, I think I am as well. The things that can make an unexpected change in that are things like cleaning services past year, things like a boiler failure, or, you know, unexpected things that we...
We just got new ones.
I know.
Not one.
I intentionally chose something. So I just point that out, that there are some assumptions built into that. And it's a comfort level thing that we need to maintain for another month.
And there's a lot of... And, you know, there's space between those two numbers to find your happy spud.
So is it possible for you to plug in the ending balance of 478.5 and kind of...
I could do a little magic.
Yeah, I wonder, because I noticed the expenses are the same between the two scenarios.
Yes.
So maybe there's some...
We're trying to tighten... Well, and as we go through the budget process, and this happens every year, we're starting with like pretty wide estimates in June. And then for the July meetings, we've got all of the financials that are halfway through the year by that point. And that really lets us tighten it up a bit. And like I say, we get, you know, we start getting some of these other renewals start coming in, or we're at least getting an idea. So usually by August, we're a lot closer, I think, to where we're going to wind up in our end of 20... Our end of current fiscal year.
And I won't... Everybody probably knows this already, but I feel like the flat tax rate strikes a balance between our responsibility to ensure adequate funding for the library and also be responsible to the taxpayers of the village. And I did a little homework coming into this. And I pulled up the 12-month percentage change of the Consumer Price Index. And everybody probably feels this, but the numbers are daunting. A year ago, we were at 9.9% inflation. It didn't get below 5 until March of this year. And we're just now starting to mitigate that. And by the way, kudos to the library staff for the performance over the last year because despite those high inflation numbers, you managed to post another year of under spending. Revenues came in higher thanks to the personal property magic.
Yes. Personal property replacement tax is our friend.
I also... And I know this is, you know, we're $80,000 off, right? And I know this is not making up full, but if we change the Library Capital Replacement Fund index to 3% for next year, we still end up north of the target at the end of '27. So I think there's some wiggle room. I'm confident in the track record of spending and also the track record of revenue. I really would love to see something that landed us at the reserve target, still maintained the flat tax rate, which, by the way, is still a 3.7% increase in the levy. Because I don't know about y'all, but last year when they increased my EAV, I went into my mortgage the next day and like I had no more value in my home and I had no more money in my bank account when they increased my EAV. And that's all like funny math, right? Nobody realizes real gains when your EAV goes up. So frankly, I mean, families are beaten up after the last few years.
That quadrennial reassessment always kills.
Yeah. So I think, you know, a 3.7% increase in the levy, I still don't feel great about it. And we're breaking a psychological barrier and going over $6 million for the first time. And I'd really love to see us put this scenario together that threads the needle and keeps that flat tax rate and still lands us at the reserve target.
We'll try to get it as close as we can.
I agree with what you just said. We don't always agree.
We do agree on this. We do this every year.
And you notice we're relatively civil about our disagreements, but... No, I do agree with that. I also point out that a couple of years ago, when the inflation rate was sky-high, we came in quite a bit lower than the inflation rate. So we're smoothing that. We came in under it before we're... It's double talk, I realize. We're keeping up. The rate is flat, the levy is higher by 3.7%. But that 3.7% is still comfort level for me. And so I'm comfortable with your continuing to tighten things up. If somebody else wants to tweak some things, I'm certainly open to that. If you want another presentation or another...
How about I do this?
But I would also... It's our decision, clearly, but I would welcome a recommendation also.
Absolutely. How about I do this? For the next meeting, I will do the flat tax rate. And if that does not get us to that $478,000, I will do whatever does get us there.
Yeah.
Be good to see.
And as I said, I'm going to tighten up those expenses as much as I can.
And I don't know, I'd like to maybe see here some other input from the board, but I'd be okay with trimming the Capital Replacement Fund increase as part of that equation, maybe with 5%.
Yeah, trimming that 5 down to 3.
Or whatever.
Or whatever.
I look for a recommendation from staff on that issue because that requires a lot of looking into the future. And I'm not the best person to do that.
I will give you the options to get us as close as possible. This is always the Price is Right, the closest without going over.
Nice job, Julie.
Yeah, I think both scenarios would be nice. Kind of a side question, though. Has there been any development with the attempts to do like a statewide bargaining with electronic resources?
No, there's been none.
When do we run this for, what kind of equation expected?
Any day now. There is, however, one other thing that happened in the state's budget that could have a really great impact, but it's not going to happen until at least mid-'24. In the state's budget, they allocated $5 million of new money for a statewide database package for libraries. So that will... The state will negotiate it, and that will allow us to drop our individual subscriptions as libraries throughout the state of Illinois to a lot of those very common databases, and a lot of them are seriously expensive. So this could really be a boon for us in that regard.
ILAs are working on that one?
State library, yes. We have a Secretary of State who's a library geek. And all of a sudden, we get a statewide library database package. So, you know, that part we're liking a lot. So thank you all so much. I feel good about where we are going with this. And hopefully, Rob and Janet have not fallen asleep because we're getting to their fortune of this agenda.
They can draw your...
Janet will be...
It's here. It's an hour earlier for Rob, so he definitely should not be falling asleep.
No, I'm here. Can y'all hear us?
Yes.
I can hear him. I was a little lagged on for...
Did they hear us?
Yes, we can hear you.
They hear you?
Yes, that's good.
All right. Oh, yes, we are moving on. Sorry. Let's do item B in 2023 to 2028 High Level Strategic Plan. All right. So the High Level Strategic Plan draft is in your packets. This, this plan was developed through that long process. All of the meat of the plan came from the strategic retreat that all of you trustees and a couple of you in the audience were a part of. That happened in mid-May. We received the draft plan from Rethinking Libraries. And then our, there were some questions in that plan. Rob and Janet threw it over to the management team to make a few decisions about direction. And so this plan includes our mission, vision, values, areas of service focus, goals, and potential goals, outcomes, and suggested initiatives. Those suggested initiatives are what was voted on at the strategic retreat. So if you remember doing those voting exercises with the dots, this was what came of the dot voting exercises. I will say that our, our staff, we, this is the way that Rob and Janet have put it together. We'll probably have Grace do her magic on it after it's approved by everyone, by the board, because Grace makes everything beautiful. Grace is our graphic display, yeah, now I can't even get her title right, gallery and graphic display coordinator. So Rob and Janet, you want to talk a little bit about the draft plan?
Yeah, so, thank you, Julie. So this, the draft plan, so just as a kind of refresher, so this is the High Level Plan. So this is your, your strategic lighthouse. This is intended to kind of point the way, you know, mission, vision, values certainly kind of speaks to the overall approach of the library. Should be, you know, it's a little bit more eternal. The, the strategic focus areas are more of a five-year kind of timeframe. All of this was informed, like Julie said, informed by the retreat, right? So we took all those results, you know, kind of pulled those together into what, how the voting led to different focus areas, and worked a little bit with the, with the staff over the last couple of months, doing mostly just wordsmithing. We weren't, we didn't, we didn't rework the whole intent of what we put together. It was really more just kind of wordsmithing and playing with some language to kind of get it in a more polished state. And we feel pretty happy about how things kind of pulled together. And I don't know, and then, so what, and then there's a reminder, so this is the High Level, this is that, that five-year vision. And then once, once this is finalized, and once you do, once the board approves this, then we'll work with the, with the staff to develop the first 12-month work plan, action plan, however you want to kind of label that. That'll be very specific about, you know, the actual to-do list of what's going to happen in that first 12 months, driven and informed by this High Level Plan. So it could be things coming out of the suggested initiatives, or it could be, could be some other things that are adjacent, but it's still, all the things will be, in that work plan, will be things that are working towards having these impacts, both the overall and the more specific impacts in these focus areas as well. I don't know, Janet, anything else you want to say, or maybe specifically mission, vision, values?
The mission, vision, values, a lot of that you probably recognize as things that we definitely talked about during the session. Some of the values weren't necessarily specifically the ones that came up, but they're things that we discussed as being important to the library. So even if they didn't get the most votes, there's a couple of things in there that, like integrity is one of those, that we had some discussion about whether that should be part of the values, and you will see that that is part of the values going forward. So, you know, we just kind of developed some language around each of those and what those mean for your library. But, but otherwise, you know, it's pretty much what came out of, of that day.
I mean, at this point, I think we're just, you know, eager to hear thoughts on the High Level Plan. I know there's, you know, there's been some ongoing discussions as to how this, if it does integrate with the, your existing Equity Diversity Inclusion Plan, or if they stand alone, I mean, I think that's something that's, you know, that's, that's out there as a discussion as well. We're just eager to help consolidate as, as we can.
That last comment, though, that is a separate discussion, whether we integrate them or not. We're going to talk about just this one for now.
Well, that can be part of this discussion on whether, whether you want to pass this separately and then work on the integration, or work on the integration first and, and pass it as a single cohesive plan. That's really up to you guys.
That first study is a study. It's not a plan. The way I see it, it certainly informs whatever we're doing in DEI, you know, whatever, wherever that fits into the strategic plan. But I don't think it's necessary to do like a total mashup of. I think the study is, has a lot of useful data, a lot of, you know, information that will help us in creating what the, what the, the actual plan is.
The Equity Strategic Plan was developed separately and is a full strategic plan.
Oh, I thought you were talking about this, this, this study. I'm sorry. Okay, take it back.
Yeah.
What study, what study you referred to?
I was thinking about the diversity study. It's a whole, I've been confused on that.
The discovery report.
Sorry.
Yeah, Equity Strategic Plan is listed right under the High Level Strategic Plan in the order.
We have copies of both here.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Sorry for the confusion.
Go ahead, you're about to speak. Go for it, you go. You're about to speak. Go ahead.
I, I think it's important for us to get to a point at some point where we are integrating all this work that has gone into the first Equity Inclusion Strategic Plan. If it's important to us as a library, it belongs in our, in a, in the strategic plan. However, I also, you know, and maybe it's, maybe we've been waiting so long that we kind of not had a strategic plan since 2020. So like, maybe it doesn't matter if this gets to like the approval of the whole plan, it's, it's like, I would hate to hold up like some of these projects and initiatives that some of our budget is based on, and some of the things I think probably staff are pretty excited to start tackling, and I know I'm excited to start seeing, because I have a feeling that integration might take a while, it might take, I think that was a common, a common thread of some of the, you know, feedback we've seen. So I, I want to see it integrated eventually. In interest of like expediency, I feel like we should pass this first eventual goal of integration.
Yeah, and I think it's acceptable for us to proceed approving this, you know, to represent our agreement of the findings and kind of how it's formatted and the information that's presented correctly, and then kind of move from there on the integration date. Just to get it done, I'm sorry.
I'm willing to go with that procedure if it turns out, if, if really, if integration at this point is not possible. To be honest with you, my plate has been so full for the past week that I have not been able to fully digest either this plan, much less the initial attempt at an integration that we received yesterday. What I was going to wonder, not necessarily propose yet, but is, could another, some more time be spent at attempting to integrate the two? We saw one initial attempt that I scanned yesterday or today, and it looked bad to me, but I couldn't go and, is this here, is this here, are they, are they both, both there? Part of my feeling about the, the ultimate integration, and the sooner the better frankly, is that we, quite frankly, recruited a group of very talented people to serve on the Equity Advisory Board. They recommended the strategic plan to us, which we studied and approved. And I don't want even, even the appearance of that being second fiddle to a different strategic plan. I think it is a very important part of our strategic plan, not a subset, not a footnote, but an integral part of it. Now, if it's not, if it ultimately is either, well, I hate to say too much work, but if it's not feasible to combine the two, then I'm more than willing to go along with the process of having two separate plans for, with the goal of combining them before the five-year period itself, and definitely combining the action plans, what I call the action plans, the annual.
Yes.
But I'm not, I'm not quite ready to say that we can't combine them.
And I think that the Equity Team, their work, unfortunately, they meet the day before you do. That meeting time is going to change, thank goodness, starting next month, so that we'll have a little more time in between the two. But the, the team met last night, and they actually had what I thought was a breakthrough on how to put the two plans together. They, they found an example from a different library, and it looked a lot like the High Level Plan that you've got here with just a little tweak to it. And so they went ahead, and that was the draft that you received late last night, which was basically as soon as we finished working on it, I shot it out to you all, that, that just shows, and it's got, if you look at it, there are two font colors used, the black and the purple. Everything in black is everything that was in the High Level Plan. We didn't touch any of the wording, we just kind of shifted things around and where they were located. And then we took the verbiage from the Equity Strategic Plan and inserted it into the right places within each of those categories, and then changed, and then we just made the wording, you know, did that little bit of wordsmithing so that all the verb tenses agreed, things like that, you know, things that were, were clauses instead of full sentences, were all clauses instead of full sentences, things that were full sentences, et cetera, so.
Well, I applaud the Equity Advisory Board and the staff for doing that last night. That was, it's been a long meeting.
It was a three-hour meeting.
And I guess I said it already, but it looks to me like that, that suggests that maybe it is possible. Now, if it turns out not to be, I don't want to, I mean, we've got a budget to do, we've got some other thing, we've got some more business coming up here, and I don't want to defer important business, including this part. But if it could be done, and I guess I was hoping maybe we could give the Equity Board and the staff one more month to attempt that. And if halfway through that process, they say, you know, we can't get it done in a month, we have the budget to do, we have some other things that we have to get done as well, and then I would back off. But I'd kind of like to try.
So I'm struggling with the process element of this, because I, I never expected that retreat to be the last opportunity to actually roll up our sleeves and work on the plan together as a board. And you could argue that this strategic plan, in addition to the fiduciary responsibility we have, is our most important role, right, as a board, is to create and then adhere to the strategic plan and then manage our finances. And as much as I appreciate the efforts and the good intentions, I don't think abdicating that responsibility or allowing that responsibility to be carried out by any team, and I'm not picking on the Equity Advisory Team, is appropriate. I think that's our job, and I think we need to be directly involved in that, not a downstream recipient of the effort.
I may be misspoke. I didn't consider us to be the downstream recipient. I expected that to be a draft presented to us, just like the draft that we got, the High Level Draft.
Sorry, you worked on it.
And I think that we would roll up our sleeves at that point, and...
Again, I appreciate the effort, and if it's, if it's an input to our work, then great.
May I clarify?
Yeah.
The High Level Strategic Plan was, had a little wordsmithing by the management team with RTL.
Yep.
And Rob and Janet were very cognizant of making sure that when the board, when the management team was doing any wordsmithing, that they were keeping, that, that what rose to the top in the strategic retreat continued to be at the top. The Equity Team has been working on the integration of the two. They have not changed anything from the High Level Strategic Plan, other than to like move the sections around in how it's presented.
I was clear on that, yeah.
Okay.
The, the fact remains though, we, we just got our first glance at the output, less than we could go, right? And I just, from a process standpoint, I expected to have the opportunity to digest that, to work on it together as a board, to consider how we integrate the Equity Strategic Plan and the positioning of the Equity Strategic Plan, which predates our current effort by a couple of years, right? And I think we have...
Eighteen months.
New input, and the act of trying to merge those two will allow us to bring that Equity Strategic Plan to life in a way that's consistent with the input we just received through the strategic planning process. And I think that's an important exercise to go through.
Rob, do you have anything to add on the process thus far?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I mean, I think that, you know, every client we work with is different. I think you probably get the kind of parent to say that in this process, but, you know, we've worked with, we've worked with libraries where literally, you know, we did the kind of polished process like we did with the management team there, and then library got it and said, or the board got it and said, okay, yeah, we're good with this. And we've had others where they really, like you said, Bill, rolled up their sleeves and dug into it, and, you know, really put their, put their kind of an additional stamp into the process. So I, there's no, I don't think there's any right way. I think it's what, what makes sense for, for your board, for your library, for your community, and how close did we get? I mean, I think that's part of it, is how close are we to what the intent that you'd like to see in this? Sometimes we're real close, and sometimes we're, we're, you know, further off. So I, I think that's kind of the first question, is how, you know, to the board, is as you look through this, and I agree, I understand you only had less than a week to digest it, but does it feel at least directionally in the right, you know, going down the right path, or is it, do you feel like it's diverged in ways that you weren't expecting?
I mean, my own personal reading of it, I'm, I'm comfortable with it, but I think, you know, we do good work when we put our heads together. And I think we should take that opportunity, and I think the product will be better for it.
And I would add the definition of we, as the board and the staff, together on that, because what I was suggesting, the staff would take a look at not only the High Level Plan and the, and the Equity Plan, which has already been approved, but it doesn't mean it can never be changed, and make a stab at combining them, and along the way, possibly suggesting some other directions, just as a head start for us. We would then roll up our sleeves and come up with a final product.
First thing.
I, I also didn't, I mean, I, I've read it, but maybe not fully digested both of the plans. I do appreciate the Equity Team's work to put them together, because I tried to look at them separately, and I was like, ugh, and then it helped at least merge some of the ideas for me. ideas for me. The reason why I think integration might be more difficult is just because it was helpful to see them together, but I also, and to your point, they did this deliberately, like by calling, leaving this plan, the RTL plan alone and kind of putting things in, integrating in terms of language and that kind of thing, but basically mushing them together. I didn't, I don't think that does integration, like it's doing integration a disservice to kind of slap on. And I stop this too, like loose and trunk, because I know they worked hard on this. But I think there's opportunity for us to tie them together much more closely so that the Equity work doesn't play second fiddle, to your point, so it's not like, oh, well, here's the strategic plan and then here's some other things we added because it's part of this other plan. I'd really like to see us, to your point, talk through what that looks like, because I think it probably could be integrated more and more deeply if we thought about it together.
Practically speaking, I think it's going to be very difficult to execute two strategic plans, right?
Okay.
Constantly referencing two strategic plans seems like a very inefficient way to operate.
I guess I'm asking the question, and it's impossible to answer at this point, about how long that integration process would take, and is that too long? And I don't know that we know the answer to that yet, but I'd kind of like to develop the answer to that question before we make a final decision.
Well, I almost want to take it a step further back by, given that this was the process that we were all involved in, this, the first, the high-level strategic plan alone is the document that's the product of the surveys and focus groups. Are we happy with how the information and results contained in this, first and foremost, before we even talk about integration? I think that's kind of what we have to look at first as we work with RTL. And then I think once we get past that step, then yes, then the integration and everything. But I don't know that we've like even reached consensus on, yes, these are, we are all on board with the values, we're all on board with the objectives and the outcomes. So I think the next question is, how do we go about getting into that agreement? Can we do like a committee of the whole meeting? Do we feel good about that? I mean, I definitely would love more time to...
And I also really like pizza, so we can do something.
Maybe do something like we did with the board retreat where we started early with pizza. Pizza and salad.
Yeah, we just buy pizza, that's all.
Forget the salad.
The salad just makes us feel better about ourselves.
You don't have to put that in the council.
I don't disagree with that at all. I think, I thought I saw maybe those two tasks going in, not in parallel, but integrating those two tasks, actually. But if it makes more sense to...
I just want to make sure that we all are happy with...
You're making a point.
You know, this reflection on...
If it makes sense to look at the RTL document by itself first and make sure we're at least in both of it before we start combining the other, and I guess I could understand that. I thought we could do that together, but if people don't agree with me on that, then I can go along with the consensus.
If we do committee of the whole, I, I mean, even that, I don't know if we could get through all this, so it'd be helpful to like define what, well, is our initial meeting is for, like what it's yet out and what we hope to get out of that first thing before we get... I suspect that even that, you know, two hours would not be enough for us to do all of the things that we, I think we probably think needs to happen before this is fully approvable by this board. So like, you know, is it the first time, it's mission, vision, values, we walk away, we feel good about that.
Yeah.
Is the next thing, you know, the first, whatever the first objective is, maybe it's that, like focus area, I guess is what we're called. So, I mean, not to draw the process so long, because I just want to get it...
This is going to dictate so much.
But we need to get it right.
Well, then I got a couple of questions. Number one, do we have a time limit on this, practically speaking?
We are...
That was the first question, the second question?
We are already at our not-to-exceed amount with RTL.
Well, that's what I, that was going to be the second half of my question, is our relationship with RTL, how was that impacted by time? Can we take two months off to do this part and then come back, or?
I would be more comfortable if we continued, if we continued with RTL on a time and materials basis to continue the process, because I am not comfortable facilitating that.
So to clarify, where at our not-to-exceed, from the original statement of work?
Yes, because we have, we exceeded the scope of work.
We exceeded the scope of work. But have they, at the point now that we're at, have they completed the initial scope of work, deliverables, and we're, and we're at a not-to-exceed amount, or we're at our not-to-exceed amount and there's still work to be done?
We're at our not-to-exceed amount and there's still work to be done. Rob, you want to go over that?
Yeah, so the only part of the scope that still remains in the scope as we outlined it, that we haven't delivered yet, is the, is kind of the kickoff initial support on the development of the work plan. So that's kind of the only remaining piece. The, we hit the, we hit the not-to-exceed amount because there were some scope changes throughout and, you know, the risk of taking the, you know, the project was not as time material, and you guys had huge success with the retreat, or with, I'm sorry, with the survey, so there was, so there was, there was quite a bit of additional processing time in processing all those, those survey results. So that exceeded, you know, what we had budgeted for the typical amount of time required to execute the survey. So your, your survey results, you know, exceeded expectations, so that and a couple of other, you know, things on the way kind of went a little bit outside the scope, so that's why, you know, I mean...
Was that the only, was that, could you summarize the scope changes? Is it just that some of the items that were in scope took more effort, or did we have scope changes?
We actually did more focus groups than were originally in the scope of work as well.
Correct.
So regardless of where, what we do with this topic, we've got to authorize additional spend or allow additional spend to happen?
Yes, and Rob and I had talked about it, and they gave me an estimate of about $1,000 to get through, from, if this were approved today, through the work plan piece with the management team. And so I went ahead and said that we would do that within the professional services budget that I have discretionary funds for.
Your recommendation for this?
Well, I'll, I'll make a motion at this, I mean, and I'll, before I make the motion, I'll comment, I think it's also really important for colleagues to hear the discussion as well.
Especially given the...
That's a good point. So I'll make a motion to table this.
Pending an additional draft.
Yeah, I was trying to think about the timeframe to table it, so I guess we could leave it open-ended.
Yeah, probably better to leave it open-ended, and then if you want, after we formally table it, if you want to talk about that, that committee of the whole meeting, and if we're comfortable doing that in August.
Okay, so I'll resume my motion to table this pending additional board discussion and development of the review and approval of the RTL outfit. Second.
We have a...
Kayla, make my motion sound more intelligent.
We have a motion in a second to what Bill said. All those in favor, please say a hi.
Hi.
All those opposed. I'm standing. I guess I should open for more discussion.
What do we want to do, 5:30, 6 o'clock on August, whatever the hell?
It's going to be the 23rd, right? It's always the first day of school.
It's always.
Like my kids, I'm going to have pizza.
It's also the first day of school.
Rob, Janet, are you looking at your calendars?
Oh, yeah.
We also have to wrap the budget that night.
Yes, we will have to wrap the budget that night, but I am...
We're good, we're good, she's in the budget.
I think we are.
I feel like we're going to, can't even bear to say. I feel like on the budget piece, that once we get all of those expenditure things tightened up, that it's rapidly going to show what is going to be, you know, the right, where that right number comes in.
Sounds amazing.
All right, so the global's present on its own as to just kind of dive in and take notes and maybe cross-reference the findings book and...
Yes.
In that case, we're on to the library draft, for example.
Is there a date for that? Sorry, I didn't catch any of the questions.
Oh, yeah, that is the 23rd of August.
Got it.
5:30, you're now in our time zone, so it's Janet who has to be in a different time zone.
Actually, I'm the one that's in the same time zone.
Oh, you are?
Rob's like another way around.
Further behind, I'm in...
No, we're behind us now. He went from an hour ahead to an hour behind.
All right, well, thank you for coming and we'll see you on August 23rd.
All right, we'll see you guys that night.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Bye.
Moving around. I feel better that I, now that I know what documents we're actually working with. I don't know, it just got into my own head too much. I apologize.
I just wanted to announce our award, we're being honored at the Youth Outlook Dare to Dream Gala as their business partner. It's their business partner award, and Youth Outlook's mission is to celebrate, empower, and advocate for and provide services to meet the ever-evolving needs of LGBTQ+ youth and their families, friends, and communities. And as you know, there's a Youth Outlook drop-in center here in Downers, and we have worked with Youth Outlook extensively as an organization. They've been a great partner, so we're very proud to receive that award from them. If you haven't gone up to the Adult and Teen Services Department lately, go on up and have a look. The Ask Us desk has been renamed to the Adult and Teen Services Desk. They have a new sign, they're very happy. And also in other name changes, our Hot Reads collection was recently renamed to Lucky Day Collection, partially because we were having people who weren't understanding what Hot Reads was and expected every bestseller to be on the Hot Reads shelf, and that it wasn't that. Lucky Day is actually those copies of very popular materials that are not able to have holds on them. So it is definitely your lucky day when you find the thing that you want on that shelf, because that is a very popular material, but you're finding it because it's not going out to fulfill holds. So popular renaming going on throughout the library. We are also working on the changes in the administrative offices. Scott has moved into Caitlin's former desk, Caitlin's in her new office, the administrative files are moving. Marketing and Communications Manager Cindy Katry will come home from vacation and be able to move into her new office that was formerly the storage, admin storage room. And we are making a nice little seating area and file area in the admin workroom. So lots of changes happening, and that's all basically, that's all furniture-based, so it's just moving stuff and people. So that project is well underway. We did have quite an uptick in incidents in June, there were 31. Seventeen of them were teens and tweens. I am happy to report that here in July, the teens and tweens seem to have calmed down a bit. So, we were really having, we did have some pretty significant incidents, including a young gentleman who decided to throw chairs in the teens, in the teen department. And he was asked to leave. We did, we did actually wind up calling the police, both on that day and on a subsequent day. We were unable to give him his band letter on the day of the incident, and so when he returned, as is our normal practice, we called the police to issue that band letter and let him know that he was unable to return to the library for that period of time, and to talk to him. And the officer also had a very nice talk with this young gentleman and his friends about their conduct in the library. So, thank you, Officer Giamin. So, yeah, we have, we've also had an interesting rash of people who have called the police themselves to the library for various things. Always interesting, many of which did not have to do with the library itself. We also had to call the police for an incident taking place in the parking lot. At one point, the police were dealing with something that was happening on the sidewalk and in the garden walk area, that they were just there and it was dealt with, and they came in to tell us after the fact. Lots of things happening, but in general, we're a lot quieter in July than we were in June, and as far as incidents are concerned, not as far as summer reading is concerned. We have been hopping. They have regularly been having 75 kids at storytime. Our children's area is just slam-packed. The PTO math club days, as they are every year, are extremely well-attended. All of our parents love coming in and making, doing it all in one stop, so that they're doing their math club packets, they're getting their summer reading prizes, they're doing the scavenger hunt in the children's department, they're entering the book bundle raffle by drawing a picture, so lots of things going on, lots of good things happening in the library. I don't think I have anything else to do.
I just wanted to say I like the format for the directors' report with the individual department reports.
Oh, yes.
It's helpful to help us connect the dots and who the players are and so forth.
Exactly, and that's, that's why we like to include all of the reports from our various managers in your board packet, so that, you know, you know what else is going on in the library, because there's always something more happening around here. Oh, thank you for the reminder, our staff is doing some wording changes to the land acknowledgement that will come before the board in August. It kind of wraps it up in a neat bow, because that will be the two-year anniversary of the passing of the land acknowledgement, so it's the perfect time for us to give it a little je ne sais quoi. And also, we are not going into executive session today. The investiga- The investigation report has still not been received from Ansel Blink. We do anticipate getting that next week and we'll disseminate it to the board members so you can have a look at it. And just a reminder that this is a third-party investigation happening internally at the library. There is no actual litigation associated with this.
So a committee of the whole, regular meeting and executive session. An obvious...
Happy August.
Really awesome.
On the first day of school.
On the first day of school.
We may need pizza before.
I know, two deliveries.
After my...
It feels weird not having comments, but we're all done, so we'll go ahead and adjourn meeting at 10:01 PM.